Turn it off.
We'll leave it on. The one's good.
I'm gonna, yeah. That's gonna go off. It's gonna go off.
I'll now call the order of the April tenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting of Mayor and Council. I'd like to call on Councilman Tim Carroll to lead us in prayer. Please remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to unite and, and the first thing I really want to ask of you tonight is this. We have a councilperson, Vivian Miller Cody. Her husband is in desperate need of your healing hand. So if you would put your healing hand on Anthony Cody, we would, we would just pray dearly and, and appreciate the blessings you can provide. We ask that you also put a healing hand on our community as we continue to heal from all the storms. And we ask all of this in your son's name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I meant my first correction of the night, of course, I meant the April twenty-fourth meeting of Mayor and Council. As I bang the gavel, I'll give Councilman Harden time to get settled in. You'll see under minutes for approval, the minutes for the April tenth aforementioned regular meeting are forthcoming. We'll move on to item three for ordinances and resolutions. I'd make consideration of a request from the Valdosta Lounes County Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation for rehabilitation of runway four twenty-two lighting and replace the general aviation terminal building. Tim Hood, our fantastic new executive director. Colonel, how you doing?
Doing well, thank you. Mayor, Council, good to see everybody tonight. Coming to you with a request to approve a grant coming from the state of Georgia. This grant will combined be for the rehabilitation of runway two, uh, four and two-two lighting and also for their portion of the general aviation terminal. Other funds for the terminals specifically will be from Splos, Bill, AIP, our own funds as well as the G dot funds. Their portion of the product or for the project they're offering is up to eight hundred thirteen thousand dollars and sixty-four, eight hundred thirteen sixty-four dollars and eight-three cents. No City of Valdosta funds is going to be required for this.
Council, any questions for Colonel Hood? Nope, none, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. A motion at second, all in favor, show of hands. Colonel, thank you. Move on to item four, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. I'd make consideration of a request to approve a quote to clean the ozone generation system at our water treatment plant. Jason Barnes, our utilities director, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is consideration to request to approve the, uh, quote to clean the ozone generator. The number two ozone generator is one, the two ozone generators used is the primary disinfectant for our drinking water, the water plant. A generator is a Wedeco brand, it was installed in two thousand and seven. The generator produces five hundred, five hundred pounds of ozone, um, gas a day. Um, it's recommended that this unit be cleaned every five to seven years. Uh, the unit was last cleaned in two thousand and nineteen. So the process ozone generator, uh, Ms. Reese, if you can scroll down to the last page, it shows kind of a picture of that. So we have liquid oxygen that comes in from air gas into two outside tanks outside the ozone building. So once that turns into, it's a liquid gas, then we use it and turn into a Gox, which is it turns into a liquid to a gas. Uh, what you see, the first part of that is the actual ozone generator there. Once it turns into, the oxygen turns into a gas at electricity, um, that's how we produce ozone. That is the shell of the actual generator, the ozone generator. So without this being cleaned, um, this is kind of an upgrade on the electrodes to this generator. Um, the electrodes we have now, uh, basically if it was to arc inside that shell that you see on the bottom picture, um, that's it. Um, that generator is, and we're talking millions and millions of dollars to replace it. So this upgrade to this electrodes is part of this, is that they're gonna have instead of this a rod through a piece of glass that goes through those tubes. There's about three hundred and something tubes on that ozone generator in that shell. Um, the new electrodes will turn into, it will come in a mesh. So they've upgraded the actual electrodes now and once, if this, once upon your approval, um, this will last five to seven years. We won't have to worry about this generator getting cleaned again. We'll have to clean the other one, we'll put in a budget, but this one won't. So, um, with the process of pure oxygen and electricity inside a sealed stainless steel, um, housing, which is what you see. It must be, you know, the generator's gotta be cleaned with less than no oil on the hands. I mean, it's very particular on that. If it were not to be cleaned improperly, it could cause an explosion. So there's so much stuff of this generator, we only have two. Like I say, that's our primary disinfectant for our water plant. So the staff recommends to approve the quote submitted by County Line Mechanical Solutions in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cent, which includes the sole source quote submitted by Xylem for the cost of the electrodes. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Think he was pretty specific, pretty thorough on that. Jason, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Second.
A motion at a second, all in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Jason, thank you. Move on to item B, consideration of bids for gasoline and diesel fuel for the city of Valdosta. John Burton, our motor pool superintendent, gonna save us some money.
This year at least. This contract is bid for a single source supply of gasoline and diesel to fuel the city of Valdosta automotive and equipment fleet. Util- utilizing one source of supply for these commodities will ensure the city a more reliable service, especially in times of crisis. Sealed bids were received on April eighth this month. The bid pricing represents the freight rate and profit margin based on the daily Opus index price for a single gallon each of gasoline and diesel fuel combined for bid purposes. This is a one-year contract set to start July one this year with four options to renew. I recommend that Council approve the low bid submitted by Brad Lanier Oil Company. Questions?
Council, any questions?
Just one quick question. Just to confirm, we still take care of the city's school buses as well, right?
Yes, we do.
Any other questions? John, thank you. Council, yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. Motion at a second, all in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you, John. Thank you, item C, consideration of bids for the phase two rehabilitation project for the Knights Creek sanitary sewer trunk line. Ben O'Dowd, our unbelievable engineers, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First agenda item is regarding the second phase of the Knights Creek trunk line rehab. In a flashback, the first phase of the Knights Creek trunk line rehab was performed under emergency authorization by RPI. Uh, this was the long board that went under US eighty-four railroad. Last meeting, I believe, or meeting before, y'all authorized a professional design services agreement for the design of phase three of the Knights Creek North trunk line rehab. While I was presenting that, this bid was advertising for the phase two Knights Creek trunk line rehab. We had good bid attendance, had three bids, I believe, tight bid spread. It's a pretty substantial amount of piping that we're replacing. I've been asked if we had any opportunity to sleeve or slipline that pipe. Pipe diameter is constrained, currently undersized for the service area that it provides service to. So we don't have the opportunity to line it necessarily. We did offer the contractors the option to burst the pipe, which is a methodology where you take some kind of fused pipe lining system and you pull a big or an expander head through the existing line and that line bursts out, contains the larger diameter, typically larger diameter pipe inside of it. Uh, this was not found to be cost effective. It was more cost effective for the consultant, for the contractor to open, cut, and replace. But we wanted to offer that as an alternative in case it was, uh, more cost effective. If you'll scroll down to the bid tab. So you see there, we've got, uh, all of the names on there are all of the attendees of the mandatory pre-bid meeting. So Craven Industrial, JWA, K Doug, Reynolds Construction, and RPI all attended the mandatory pre-bid. Uh, JWA, K Doug, and RPI all expressed interest at the bidding table. If you'll scroll back up to the agenda item. I just wanted to show you guys that because K Doug's bid, uh, was for bursting. So the low bid for the project is RPI in the amount of two million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh, we approved, or we would recommend a ten percent contingency on the project for unforeseen circumstances in the field. Requesting approval in the total amount of two million, nine hundred, eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty. Questions?
Counsel.
Yeah, she said that all those people, they were at the table and they got all the same information and so forth and everything. And the reason I was just looking at that with the contingency portion on there, the total amount is gonna be two million, nine hundred, eight thousand and five hundred and thirty-six dollars, right? So, uh, just looking at that and we put in all, everything that we think may possibly might could happen that the contingency fee, we, we shouldn't have a cost higher than that to go up later on.
I can't guarantee that we won't have a cost higher than that. I'm, I have no idea, I can't see underground. If I could, it would not be working. You know, we, we do our best to trim costs and to rain, you know, any kind of overages in. But the kind of overages that we would anticipate here are things beyond what we know to be true about the field condition. We know that the field conditions are costly to install pipe in, very close in proximity to Knights Creek. So there's gonna be a high water table that the contractor has to contend with. All of the contractors were aware of that high water table. They're prepared to de-water, um, in association with the installation of the PVC sewer pipe. De-watering is when you install well points, uh, below the hydraulic grade of the trench in order to draw the water table down in order to dry in.
I just want a question, could you scroll back down to the, uh, different prices that each, the bids for each one of them bid? The price that they have for their bids?
That's one, one sheet up, Teresa, that has the, the bid totals. There you go, right there.
Cause I was just looking at that, uh, cost, that two million, six hundred and forty-four, you know, the, that is so low right now. And the other ones were, you know, a little bit higher, almost like, uh, close to almost a whole million dollars more. So they were anticipating a probably a lot of problems with it, you know, some of the things that may come up. And the reason I'm just saying that that low bid is low, so it's low and it's a possibility that things may come up that they're gonna need extra money. See what I'm saying? The other ones already incorporating the, uh, the extra amount of money.
How you know that the others have incorporated an extra lump sum of money?
They're so much higher than the other, than the two, two million. That's what I'm looking at. That's what I was looking at.
I'll tell you what, I will take the unit cost schedule that each of the contractors submitted and I will send them to you. And you can see how each of the units compare and stack up. This is a lump sum contract, so it's, the cost is what the cost is. The cost is described in the scope of work. And again, I, unless there is field conditions beyond what we had available to provide to the contractor that result in some change order, some kind of resulting additional charge for the project, then there's no way for me to know what's out there, what isn't out there. But again, we've, we've reviewed, we've had a mandatory pre-bid meeting. Uh, we've discussed the scope of work at extents at length with all of the contractors that expressed interest in the project. And in staff's, staff's opinion that, that two point six million is the lowest responsible bid.
I'm not saying it's you, I'm thinking that those companies, they do this and they do it all the time. They should know what it will cost and some of the potentials that may be happening. That's why they bid such a certain amount. But I just was just looking at that to call attention, to see that it's so much lower right now. Thank you.
Ben, neither one of these prices right here has the contingency fee added to it right here on, on the sheet that we're looking at, correct?
No, three point one, three point four, two point six, staff adds the contingency on the back end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like a three. At the bottom, I thought it was a three million.
Ben, you also said that, uh, K Dig had the bursting in their price.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, I wanted to include bursting because I wasn't sure if it was more cost effective or not. So we kind of bid the thing either or, you can either burst it or you can open, cut, and replace it. Um, K Doug bid it for bursting, three point four million is the bursting price. Three point one, um, is the JWA price for open, cut, and replace. And two point six, and a lot of things go into these pricings, a lot of things can contribute to some people's prices being higher than others. Contractor availability, um, staff availability, mobilization elsewhere, cost of materials, contract duration, there's a lot of different factors that play into that. Many of which we're just not aware of, won't be.
Council, any further questions on this? Thomas?
So Ben, is that a, uh, that ten percent contingency, is that standard or does that fluctuate depending on the job?
It fluctuates at staff's discretion.
Staff discretion.
Ten percent is our standard, yes. So we can authorize a higher contingency. Again, the contingency just represents what the not to exceed amount is that we can bill up to without counsel. So if for some reason there's some concern that maybe there's some unforeseen circumstances that that low bidder didn't accommodate or account for, you can authorize a higher contingency, but, um, I would prefer to go in with a ten.
The council and Mr. Thule want our ten percent back at the end of this project.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I just don't wanna come back asking for extra money in a few months.
Are the companies aware that they have that much overage?
Uh, Councilmen, it's our public record. So I would presume that they are aware, uh, there's no real way for us to mask anything from the public, that includes contractors. You're a public entity required to operate.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel? Ben, thank you. Yours for action, Counsel.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented with the ten percent contingency.
Second. Motion at a second, all in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Ben, item D, consideration of bids for the phase one rehab of the Reamer sanitary sewer.
Yes, sir, this is the phase one rehab. Uh, again, y'all, some months ago authorized the survey and design for phase two. This is a minor rehab that we were able to perform by a specification bid, similar to what we just did with Knights Creek. Just for some background and history, this is that same area, if you're familiar with the new apartment complex that's being constructed off of Baytree. Yarmar terminates into Baytree Drive, not Baytree Road, but Baytree Drive. That new apartment complex, y'all authorized a cost sharing agreement with the apartment complex developers, probably a year and a half ago, upsized the sewer, the old sewer that went through that property. This is the extent of the sanitary sewer, the gravity sewer to the east of where council authorized the cost share improvement. So this same eighteen inch concrete pipe is ate through with holes. Uh, whenever it rains, it, um, collects water like a sieve. Similarly is presumably we have ionized. Go both ways with it. Very old, it was installed in nineteen fifties, uh, in need of replacement. It serves Sistella Apartments off of Sistella, much of the residential area south of Baytree, uh, the west of Sistella, between Wainwright and Sistella Avenue. Said he put this out for specification-based bid, uh, wherein we proposed that the contractor line the existing eighteen inch pipe and it used to be the main trunk line, and so it's oversized for its use, but it's installed at sufficient grade that we could line it very affordably. Basically use it as a carrier pipe to install a twelve inch and an eight inch pipe, HDPE pipe within carrier pipe. Uh, the pre-bid meeting, um, again, Teresa, if you'll scroll down, I believe the bid tab is down there. You've got all of those attendees, Craven Industrial, GCU, JWA, K Doug, RPI, and United Rentals, Rentals. All attended the mandatory pre-bid, JWA was the single bidder on the project. So we have found that they are the lowest responsible bidder on the project. We did speak to RPI and asked them what they would have bid and they indicated that it probably would have been six hundred thousand dollars odd higher than what they bid. So again, pretty wide bid differential, but we have reason to believe that James fully understands and willing to perform on the scope of work that was advertised.
Questions on this project? Ben, sit tight. Counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion, we approve the bid as stated.
Second. Motion at a second, all in favor, show of hands.
Uh, Counsel, if I could, um, we could scroll up to the actual item.
Ten percent contingency?
Yes, sir, I believe there is a contingency.
Yeah, Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the bid as stated with a ten percent contingency.
My apologies.
All right, second. Motion at a second, all in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Ben, thank you for pointing that out. Item B, consideration of bids for Sugar Creek Emergency Sewer Repairs. Ben O'Dowd?
All right, hopefully this is the last of the dirty for the evening. This is, as you're aware, the emergency repair for the thirty inch trunk line that runs parallel to Sugar Creek between Gonto and Baytree Road. Staff identified on January twenty-third, um, that this line had failed only during a severe rain event that we experienced in November. We immediately mobilized to establish a bypass, council approved engagement of LEA to design repairs for this location. LEA has completed those repairs, we are underway with permitting with the railroad. Staff has directed the design professional and is comfortable recommending to council authorization, approval of a contract in advance of final permitting because many of the materials that we need for this project are gonna have long lead times for delivery. So we have Georgia Power permits for the work. Just a little quick aside, where staff is pretty proud of how we, how we were able to handle this. Um, there are moments where we have to call upon our friends in the community, uh, to help us make quick judgment calls and solutions. LEA stepped up with this, delivered for the city of Valdosta. I just wanna take a moment, state that, been real cautious with my support of them for obvious reasons, but I was able to call on them. They performed the survey within weeks of my inquiry. They performed the survey within weeks of my inquiry prior to council's approval of that fund's being done. So they, at risk, took that step, did that for the city of Valdosta. Um, staff is also really proud of the solution that we've arrived at. We believe that it is the most cost-effective solution. And possibly more importantly, it is the best long-term solution from an infrastructure standpoint, as well as from an environmental resilience standpoint. If you're familiar with this section during our discussions recently about it, this thirty inch section of pipe runs parallel to and honestly in the creek bed of Sugar Creek, uh, in some places. Staff made the conscious decision to, uh, proceed with permitting through and crossing the railroad right of way so that we could locate this thirty inch water, or this thirty inch sewer, main upland of the railroad. So we are now, council approves construction of these improvements. We will have this portion of the thirty inch line located on the safe side of the railroad. So it'll be thirty inch gravity sewer, railroad, Sugar Creek. Versus before, it was railroad, thirty inch sewer, Sugar Creek. So we believe that this is the best solution. We're obviously supporting of it, to put it out to bid as such. We did have good bid attendance, if we'll scroll down, Teresa. Very tight bid spread on this one, Councilman Thule, I know that's a concern, but we do have a very tight bid spread on this one relative to the overall project cost. Three point two and two point nine seven, just under three, uh, that's about as tight as it comes on a project of this magnitude. So, uh, the apparent low bidder, which staff is recommending for So, uh, the apparent low bidder, which staff is recommending for award, is RPI in the amount of two point nine six zero seven nine five forty-five, I believe. And I believe we're asking for a standard ten percent contingency on this one as well. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Pretty familiar with this project, any questions on this one? Ben, well done. Job well done from start to finish on, on a very tough project.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented, including the ten percent contingency.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you, Ben, thank you. Move on to item F, consideration of bids for three traffic control cabinets for the engineering department.
The rest are relatively affordable compared to the first. Sorry about that. Um, this one is our standard annual request for purchase of traffic cabinets. We budgeted forty-eight nine for the purpose, purchase of three traffic cabinets at a unit cost of sixteen-three, based on FY twenty-four's bid numbers. We're seeing inflationary cost increases on these, uh, Teresa, if you'll scroll down. As you can see, the unit cost, we budgeted sixteen-three, the unit cost for our cabs has gone up to seventeen-two ninety-seventy-one. It is over budget, funded by SPOS. City staff, engineering department staff are requesting, very humbly, that you authorize the purchase of three, uh, for a budget exceedance. Answer any questions? Did get asked, does this, is this just a stainless steel box? No, it includes all of the accoutrements necessary in order to operate our traffic, so it includes all the brim, as well as just the.
Get our ten percent back, we have no problem approving this.
I will pray that that happens.
Counsel, any questions on the cabinets?
Is this just for, to replace other cabinets, or is this for us to have just in our storage?
No, this is replacement stock.
Replacement.
Generally speaking, we go through about three a year. Um, we burned through a little bit more than we anticipated from hurricane recovery and then have ensured motorist collisions with them regularly, lightning strikes, lots of different. But three is kind of our magic number. Have a, we have a negative differential, a lot of times we can make that up by calling upon favors from state, sometimes they have spare cabinets that they can loan to us. For not to do that.
Got you, thank you.
You said they loan them?
Yes, sir.
You ain't gotta pay for them.
Well, we, we generally return them once we have a cab come in, a lot of times we have to do that in case we have like delivery schedule issues where we have, you know, we need a cabinet, but it hasn't come in. We'll place a cabinet, pull it later, a lot of times, a substandard cabinet out there. A old cabinet.
What's the estimate on the uh, inflation difference? How much did it go up?
So it's, it's hard to tell what it went up year over year, one of the kind of operational changes that we're making this particular fiscal year. Is you'll note that I base the, the budgetary cost estimate on FY twenty-four numbers. Um, that's because we generally bid these out in January, we develop, staff develops the budget around the beginning of the year. So a lot of times we don't have the latest and greatest numbers, but typically we see these things go up just because the cost of chips, cost of the actual steel, the inside. A lot of times they go up around ten percent per year, roughly. We're hoping that that kind of slows down, but don't have any indication in the market that. But one of the things that we're doing differently is I'm gonna bid in FY twenty-six, I'll bid my cabs out in like September. And that way I've got the latest and greatest pricing, so that when January rolls around and I need to develop my budget for the next fiscal year, I can use FY twenty-six numbers. Plan on, I can put like a ten percent, you know, inflation increase on them and that number. FY twenty-seven is what I'm doing now, which is FY twenty-four numbers for FY, or FY twenty-three numbers for FY twenty-five. I'm two years behind the way I've been doing it. Hopefully we have more accurate.
You said there was chips in these boxes?
Yes, sir.
So they're not empty?
No, they are full, they are chock full of controllers, uh, power supplies. Control units that, that, you know, collaborate with and talk back and forth with our preemption devices and our fire trucks and ambulances, so it's, it's chock full of technology, they come preloaded.
Right.
Um, cooling system fans, the whole nine yards, it's like a giant.
Right, I just asked, so it was a justification for the price?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Ben, we got another, consideration of a professional service contract with Axis Engineering for design of the Knights Academy Road Lift Station and Sanitary Sewer.
Yes, sir, you guys might uh, recognize the name of this agenda item, it's effectively the same as the previous agenda item that was presented for this professional services agreement. Only this one is with Axis Consulting Group, um, just for a little bit of background, AES has changed names. Adult have also changed EIN numbers, means that in New World, our budgeting software, I can't authorize any further payment to them. Under the old PO, because they are effectively a new, in the eyes of the federal government, they are a brand new company, all same staff, uh, they changed office locations. Interestingly enough, they are now located within the city limits, so they are now a business partner with the city, uh, which I think is pertinent. But this is a housekeeping item, uh, basically we took, under the previous task order to AES. Deducted the amount of work that they had completed to date, under that task order, billed them out for their work to date, and then terminated that contract with AES. Then we are now proposing to council to enter into a new contract with Axis in the amount of basically the remnant from the old contract with AES. Not paying them twice for any effort, not uh, duplicating any effort with this. The housekeeping agenda item. Um, staff is recommending approval of the professional services contract. It is a percentage of construction contract, so one of the other housekeeping items that staff would like to recommend for approval is the authorization of a not to exceed amount on this. Issue that we run into with percentage of construction contracts is they are based on the bid cost of the project. Right, so we've been kind of leaning toward trying to get lump sum proposals because they're cleaner, um, from a finance and accounting standpoint. Not to exceed amount is effectively a high end, this is the most that we'll pay them. For whatever reason, the thing comes back and it's more expensive, uh, based on their percentage of construction contract, paid more than that one seventy-five, then I will have to bring it back before you. But that is a not to exceed amount, that's the. Staff is requesting counsel.
Counsel, any questions for Ben? None, Ben, thank you, counsel, yours for action again.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and we approve this as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Ben, one final item, consideration of a professional design service agreement for the new public safety facility and fire station.
Does he get extra pay for having all?
I was waiting for the chief to come up on this one, but no.
I think this is a prime opportunity to tell you that I'm just doing my job. This is my last agenda item, this is the authorization of a new professional design services agreement for the public safety facility. Prince joke formerly known as Fire Station Eight. Supposed to laugh, but you didn't, it's okay, I'll recover.
You're gonna laugh later.
I am a dad, so I have to make dad jokes. So we bid these out, we completed design of phase one, if you remember, of Fire Station Eight. Early last year, early summer last year, we put it out to bid, we got one single bidder, we had a very well attended pre-bid, uh, mandatory pre-bid. We got one single finder, final bidder at the bidding table and it was ludicrously expensive. After talking to that contractor, asking, you know, hey, why was this, this price is way over what we could have anticipated receiving? We were informed that, again, if you remember, we were trying to rush this thing along, we were trying to get basically half of it or seventy-five percent of it built in two months. Um, so it was a blistering pace for delivery on the project. We punted, we got a temporary structure instead, so now we're able to run calls out of Fire Station Eight, the chief is able to operate the fire station in a temporary fashion. Um, and so then we started exploring, okay, what is, what is the design for this public safety facility need to look like? Uh, does it make sense for us to still do this thing in phases because the phasing was intended to kind of buy us some time? Um, it's not cost effective to do things in phases like this generally because you pay more for the second guy to come behind and clean up the work of the first guy. So, um, what this proposal is, is the recommendation from staff to close out the first PO for ERA. Uh, which was authorized by council for the design of the phase one work. This work was completed under the authorized task order amount of one hundred twelve dollars, one hundred twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Um, the total amount expended for the design of phase one plans is eighty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and thirteen cents, plus some reimbursable expenses. And staff's recommendation is that we enter into a new proposal with ERA to design the complete structure, complete facility, um, for bidding. Um, this allows us access to different funding instruments, BPDs, uh, SPOS funding is constrained by referendum in the same way fire departments, referendum description. That's basically the history and the long and short of the recommendation from staff. Any questions for me, I'm sure you've got questions.
Counsel?
Go on, let your slide.
Think you're in luck.
Okay.
Ben, thank you. Counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like, that's my district. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this presentation as presented.
Second.
It's in your district. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel? Genus.
Oh, you didn't see it? My bad.
It's against the police.
Counsel, thank you, all right. I'm gonna close out this portion, head on to citizens to be heard. It's where we ask you to come forward and state your name and address, and we have it for the record, our policy requires you stay under three minutes so others have time to be heard. Again, please direct all comments to council as a whole, do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It's our policy to follow through with you and your concern, additionally, we ask any groups that want to address council to delegate one spokesperson, again, so that all have time to be heard. Having said that, is there anybody wishing to be heard at this time?
Bobby McKenzie, fifty-one forty-eight Northwind Boulevard, there is a thirty foot tall dam made from hurricane debris off of the Bay Tree Bridge. Uh, if you're heading into town towards the mall, you just look over to the right and you can see it. I'm not asking you guys to remove it, uh, you've already made that decision, you're a city engineer and your stormwater manager has already said that that's okay, it is perfectly fine as is. And is willing to uh, uh, accept all the future debris and, and uh, from future flooding and future rain, every time it rains, it's just gonna pile and pile and pile. And get bigger and bigger and bigger and harder and harder and harder to move. Uh, how that impacts the flooding upstream, I don't know, but that's gonna be one of your bottlenecks, it is thirty foot high and it covers the width of the, of the creek, Sugar Creek. How do I know, because I took a group of volunteers to clean up trash down there, because all that trash, the tens of thousands of piles of trash that the water gun was keeping for the past three years. Uh, it's not gonna accumulate there, because nothing is getting past this, nothing's getting past it, it's just not, I can show you pictures, if you look at it, nothing's getting past it, that's where it's all gonna accumulate. So not only do you accept that that dam being there and getting, and growing, you're also accepting that trash being there, so there's gonna be a floating landfill underneath Bay Tree Bridge. And unless, well, your, the city's not gonna do anything about it, we already know this from the past experiences, you're not gonna get in the water, you're not gonna pull it up. You're only gonna rely on me and my volunteers if I get them, and volunteers, so uh, if and when we get them, that's when the trash will get out, otherwise it's just gonna keep accumulating. Also, I keep bringing up the C Click Fixes and it's just a continuous problem, you know, uh, we got Click Fixes that are just falling on deaf ears. And I've got Click Fixes that are going years without being noticed and they're, they're being re-reported and there's been no action taken, there is a gas station over on Lee Street in Walton, it's been reported. Month and a half later, asked for a follow-up, nothing, and that, again, that's a gas station that's just full of trash and it's right there on that creek, and every time it rains, it goes right in that creek. And it goes right in the one mile branch and it's gonna go right into that log jam and it's gonna accumulate right under that bridge that I just talked about. The one, the same bridge where we've had that sewage line where a couple of weeks ago, the RPI went on by the, by uh, to do the cleanup and did the refurbishment of that bank. Same location, it's right down the road, uh, from the uh, from the bypass from the sewage, it's all right there, uh, and that's all gonna accumulate in there, so. You know, just yesterday, there was a C Click Fix that was said, hey, there's, there's been running water here for a week, and then, you know, Charlotte Pearson closes it out, hey, that's private property. Okay, but there's no discussion, like, all right, did you contact the private property? Did you, you know, most citizens don't know how to contact property owners. So here you are, you got water just running in the street, sewage just running, and you're closing that with private property. And they're not giving that final, hey, we'll contact private property, we'll let them know, and so that we can resolve these issues. And uh, you get, you know, these comments that says, we're trying to resolve these things to help, because C Click Fix is a force multiplier. You guys can't be everywhere, and citizens are out there helping, and you get responses like this from Angela Reyes, who says, please feel free to contact, discuss your problems, solutions, resources, funding. Basically, that's it, I take that, tell me how to do my job.
Thank you, bubba.
Thank you.
Great, any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? You can, you count, you can come up.
For the record, Ireak Morales, a public affairs specialist with the SBA, uh, the Office of Disaster Assistance. Uh, you all have been so welcoming with us, um, thanks for the, uh, to the city clerk, thanks to the mayor, uh, we have been here for a month. I'm from Puerto Rico, I was working in Milton Helen, Florida, so I arrived, uh, the past week and I already had like a meeting, SBA mitigation meeting at the city hall annex. Uh, I went to the Baldosta Daily Times, uh, on Monday, they, they published the information the same day interviewing the Baldosta University, the State University. So you all have been so amazing sharing our, our information, I came today more for the updates, because you all had met with our colleagues and all of that, and you all have been sharing information and we have citizens here too. So the updates are that we currently, we have three business recovery centers, but we are closing two this week. So the one that we are gonna still have after April the twenty-seventh is the Business Recovery Center in the Baldosta State University. Monday to Saturday, nine AM to five PM. The ones that we are closing is, uh, the one in Jordan Baptist Church, we are closing that one this Friday, that from eight AM to five PM. Jordan Ba- Baptist Church, that Business Recovery Center, we are closing this Friday. And the one that we are closing on this Saturday at five thirty PM, uh, April the twenty-sixth, they're in the, is in the library, McMillan South Side Library, that's the one that we are closing on Saturday. The deadline that is approaching is, uh, the one of, of April the twenty-seventh for physical damages, for homeowners, nonprofits and businesses, bu- businesses. But because this is one of the worst affected areas like with, like, um, in Savannah, so we are gonna stay sixty days more after the uh, deadline of physical damages. That means that even though that is late, the people can still apply with us and they don't have to explain why they are applying late. So that's very helpful to know that we are gonna stay sixty days more and the people can still apply with our programs. That's uh, the best uh, update that we have, we have approved so many millions, more than twenty thousand people have applied with us and. Thanks once again for the partnership that we have, uh, with the local government here, that you have been really, really amazing, I have been doing this for the past three years, I have, I never have. I haven't returned to my home in three years, basically every day is an emergency day for me, and I always like, that's why I'm here, I like to speak with, and engage and do outreach with you all. So, um, the last information that I want to provide is the website that the people can apply, uh, ask for, ask questions, for the updates, for reconsideration, all kinds of information. Is lending sba.gov, lending dot sba.gov, they can apply there, that's very important. And the eight hu- eight hundred number, that eight hundred six five nine twenty-nine fifty-five, that's the customer service number that the people can ask any question there.
Thank you very much, thank you for extending sixty days for our citizens as well.
Thank you so much, sir.
You're, you're awesome. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard? Please come forward.
My name is Gracie Bacon, I live at seven zero eight Holly Drive, and I've been here many times, what I want does not cost any money. Mr. Mayor, you the head, so I can talk to you. What's going on on Holly Drive, we got a boarding house, we got people selling food out of the house, we got mattresses, chairs and everything on the front lawn. Uh, the city won't pick it up because I guess they didn't call for a special pickup, so we got bed mattresses and all kind of cars, the postman can't get to some people's mailboxes for cars. And what I want is not something that you got to pay any money for. It just need a cleanup. And I got written up when my house was torn up from the storm all the time. Of course, I went to the city and explained why it was messed up, but my neighbors have their house messed up, and they haven't done anything to it. The yards, the street, the mailman can't get to mailboxes for cars. The police came one Saturday, had them put all the cars in the yard. By the time the police got back to the station, all the cars are back on the street. People, it is a mess with the snakes and the rats, and they're filth. Mister Mayor, you say don't reference you by name or your councilman, but Mister Mayor, you the head, and you ought to do something. Because Holly Drive is in a mess, and it doesn't cost no hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars to get sixteen houses cleaned up, because it's a mess. It's dangerous. Something went off on that street the other day, and it shook my whole house, and I have a big house. But that, at two o'clock in the morning, something went off, like a bomb went off in somebody's yard. Only thing you saw was smoke, but it shook my whole house when it went off. So you know we living in a dangerous situation. There's shooting going on all the time. It's dangerous. We're living in a very dangerous situation. Breathing is hard for all the marijuana and the ammonia smells. And so if you, you inhaling that stuff, my son said, Mama, you getting a high from all the drugs you smelling. You getting sick from it. And I don't know why this council won't do anything, because you all are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair certain areas of Valdosta. You won't spend fifty dollars on Holly Drive, but you would charge me taxes. I would rather you not charge me taxes. Then I would say, well, they don't deserve doing thing. I don't pay anything. But you don't have no problem charging taxes. You just have a problem doing your job. Mister Mayor, you need a check, check and balance. Your council members, they're not representing Holly Drive. They represent what they want to.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Latasha Austin, twenty-five twenty-fourth Wood Drive. I come with concerns today about the new residential construction that's being built adjacent to my home, five-thirty-one Forestwood. From my understanding now, it's a zero lot line, which both houses are sitting on. The properties are so close, you can really, really. It presents problems. Safety, firewall, other issues. I am here just today just to encourage you all to look for the two thousand and four Habitat for Humanity built at home. I presented tomorrow, registered with the city at the time, a couple of councilmen, who assisted me, and it was torn down. I come to you with the same concern. Here we are. All I ask is that you all can see what I have talked to a couple of people, and they are assured me that they are looking into it. But I just wanted to come here today to bring it to everyone, that everyone put together, because you all say we are a community. And that community is already going down. Thank you for your listen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to be heard?
George Boston Rhimes, five-zero-four-oh-Drive. Me and counsel, I just wanna thank you all. I was fighting for probably ten or twenty years about getting a better sound system in here, and I see that it's implemented. When I came in, I had my camera, councilman, my brother here. Carol told me that we got it, and he showed it, and he explained it all to me. I just commend you all for doing that. You know, I heard maybe twenty years ago, somebody said it couldn't be done, but there's a poem saying he did, but somebody with a chocolate plate, that maybe it couldn't, but it was done. So I thank you all for that. I was called March the twenty-fifth. It has nothing to do with the city, but yet it was in the city limit. Mother called me about an incident that happened at Lawrence County Middle School, and it dealt with race. I'm not gonna get into it, and I'm not even gonna mention it here. But I do believe that for a month to pass, and that mother have not received, heard a reply from the Lawrence County school system. It's not the best thing you could do with bomb threats and stuff going on across the nation at the schools. And after this weekend, if the local media put it in the public, I will put it in the eyes of the public. And it was dealing with the Ku Klux Klan. It was doing what, certainly N-word. We're dealing with the seventh grade student, and she have, uh, mother and father have seven boys. I'm just, it don't concern you, but yet it's the limit. I just want you all to know. Often people come to me, because they feel like they can't talk to other people, and that's why I'm here. That's what I've been doing since nineteen seventy-five. And I'm gonna close out by saying this, is that Holly Street, mother here, she have stood before you all. I've gone out there and filmed myself, and I'd still ride by there sometime with my camera on my car, and I filmed. And I just wish that there was a way that we would, we could relieve some of our stress. Sonny Victor sat right there in that second seat, and he sympathized with her, and he talked about how long it's been going on, and that nothing was done. As a citizen, retired veteran, community activist, patriot, father of three children, I wish that somebody would give her a listening ear on what's going on, going down on Holly Street. I got a lot of video myself that I recorded, all because I care. Y'all have a good.
George, thank you. Are there any, any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll close out this portion of the evening and turn it over to our city manager for the city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. Tomorrow, we will celebrate our Public Safety Day, where local students will tour both the Valdosta Police Department and the Fire Department. They'll experience, uh, will offer them behind the scenes, looking at both departments, and at the end of the day, they will all be provided a, a treat. We will wrap up the week's festivities for Georgia Cities and Neighborhood Development Celebration with a Paint in the Park Saturday, April the twenty-sixth. This will be the second annual Paint in the Park at Unity Park from eleven A M. to one P M. Tomorrow, we will start our annual strategic planning retreat. Friday and Saturday, city, city leadership will participate in this event. It will be held at the Sou, Southern Georgian Regional Commission Building. The retreat will begin each day at zero eight-hundred, and will focus on goal-setting, strategic planning, and identifying key practices to guide our city for the, uh, to continue in its, uh, progress. Also, National Small Business Week proclamation will present it on May the fifth to kick off this, uh, National Small Business Week. A proclamation will be presented on Monday, May fifth, at nine o'clock in partnership with the Valdosta Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. This location is twelve-hundred North Patterson Street. Closing out, the National Drinking Water Week, May the fifth to the eleventh. The week of May fifth is recognized as the National Drinking Water Week, an opportunity to learn more about the importance of safe and sustainable drinking water. To commemorate this, there will be a grand educational tour of the water plant facility on Tuesday, May the sixth, at ten A M. in the morning.
Thank you. Move on to council comments. Counsel, don't mind, I'll lead with a thank you for everybody, the forty-five or so that turned out for the mayor and chairman's paddle this past Saturday. It was a cleanup effort in our river, rivers as well. It served the citizens well, but it also is, uh, just again, a reassurance of our commitment to our waterways. And forty-five people on an Easter weekend on a rescheduled date was something exceptional, so thank you guys for caring. Thank you for the citizens for caring and turning out for that important paddle and cleanup. Councilman?
I'd just like to say really quick that when we have items that we're paying for, and they're tangible, can we have a picture with it? So the council, mayor, and the citizens kind of know what we're paying for. They'll see that, you know, something like the traffic cabinets is not a seventeen thousand dollar box, you know? Picture on the inside, so we can have a, a better visual and a better understanding of what we're paying for. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to ask my city manager to get with, um, I guess, the police chief, and see what it is that we need to do to be able to help Ms. Bacon do. If we need to change the ordinance, is there something we need to look at so we can give her some more help? I'd like to ask that you present that to us, so we can go ahead and try to get her some help.
Yes.
Yes. I gotta make a comment on the, on what was commented about council not caring and not doing. I will get with you later, and I'm gonna show you the hours and the time that I put in. I worked, and I tried, okay? It takes not just one person doing it to get a lot of things done. I tried a couple angles or whatever. I know you didn't like it for whatever happened. I was voted down by the council. They all did not seem, not all, not all of them, the majority of them did not like the proposal, so it didn't go forward. It did not happen. It's not that we didn't try. It's not that we don't care. I was out there. I put in physical time. I took pictures. I talked to people. We tried to get a few things done, and when we brought it to the council, it was voted down. They can bring something like up and try to do it again or whatever. We can keep trying. I still have asked for certain things to happen. We asked for more patrol to come. They did come by. A lot of things did happen. We, not that we don't care and don't try. Yes, we do. I do. So I'm just saying, to say that the council don't care, gotta be careful what we're saying, because it's not always correct. Might not be things happening what you want to happen, or you don't like what it is, but it did happen. This councilwoman put in a lot of time trying to clean up the area over there. That's what I have to say about that.
Councilman Gibbs? Stop. No, no exchange. Councilman Gibbs?
I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Good. Carol?
Well, I think that if many on council have not noticed, but recently, I had the honor and privilege to watch both our city manager and mayor suit up and play basketball at the Boys and Girls Club. And I'm here to tell you, puff the magic dragon has nothing on these two, because they were huffing and puffing all the way up and down the court. But I also had the privilege of reading to a group of students along with Councilwoman Sandra Tully. And I think that we both had more fun than these two did playing basketball, reading to those kids. But I encourage any of y'all to do that when the opportunity presents itself. Thank you.
We stressed the wrong thing. We were worried about whether we could shoot or rebound. We forgot cardio.
This Tuesday coming up, man, I wanna commend the folks over at Mildred Hunter Center. They do a lot for the community, a lot for that side of town, and just our community in general. Andre Newson has a R C track that they're going to be trying to crank that activity back up. So Tuesday, if you guys are free at five P M., five-thirty, I believe, gonna be over there at the R C track right off of Ballaton. So just something to keep the kids involved, and, you know, they need as much activity as possible, because we got a lot of, uh, just, we just need some help, so as much, as much as we can keep kids active, you know? So we need support from the community, so please join me out there on next Tuesday, five-thirty.
Councilman, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Are we going into executive session?
Regular session to go into executive session.
So moved.
For, for, for litigation.
For the reason of litigation. No, no, no.
Real estate.
Real estate.
Real estate. Real estate.
I got litigation on my.
Thank you. It's not gonna be litigated.
Not gonna be.
All right. Motion moved, yes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, show hands. Counsel, thank you. Clear the room.
Mayor, I make the motion to adjourn.
No decision's been made, we now stand adjourned.
The hospital wanted to present outside.
I can't imagine they would. I'm never gonna say that, but I would say, best case there, if people want to present outside.